All right, we will reconvene here in open session. The board has voted in closed session to join a lawsuit against the makers of Juul. And we'll have more information on that coming, like, in the coming days. At this time, we'll move on to our pledge of allegiance. Tonight's pledge leader is Ian A. from Northwoods. Principal Stortall writes that Ian consistently works hard to be a helper, friend, and leader throughout each school day. He models Northwoods' sore beliefs by helping his friends when they are struggling, being an empathetic ear, and being ready to learn. His responsible and respectful behaviors are contagious to his classmates and peers, and help make him a leader in any setting he is in at school. Ian, we welcome you tonight and thank you for joining us. You can come forward. Those of you who are willing and able, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. I would hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Is there a second? Second. If you moved in second, and all those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Justin, it does look like Commissioner Zer has dropped out momentarily. So when she's back, just make a note of that, please. We still do have a forum. At this time, we'll move on to our recognitions for the evening. Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Chair Norden, board members, executive team members, and special guests. I would like to recognize Northwoods Elementary this evening. Thank you to the PTO family, staff, and volunteers of Northwoods Elementary, who organized another successful Northwoods Holiday Craft Fair on November 13th. There were over 1,200 shoppers, two dozen volunteers, and thousands of dollars raised for Northwoods students and staff. The event is in its 25th year, but happens each year because of the dedicated planning of our PTO and joint volunteer efforts of families and staff. I'd like to recognize Principal Stortall and his staff tonight with a certificate and picture up front this evening.
It's the stand next to me, right?
Oh, great.
We have no members of the public signed up for tonight's public forum, so we will move directly to our regular reports. We'll start, as always, with the Budget Development Committee and Reliance.
Budget Development met on December 16th at 3:30. Some of the tasks that were given attention were, we took a look at a Qualtrics district survey that will go out to the community. It was a draft, and we took a look at the different questions and brainstormed about some of the approach there. We also took a look at the survey company and a request for proposal, an RFP, and took a look at the timeline and what that would go out and the selection process. I think that wraps up the meeting, and we will be meeting at the beginning of next year, but I don't have the date.
Thank you. We want to move on to our legislative liaison, Dr. Johnson.
For the first time, and I've got a long desire to actually say this since I've been on the school board, there are no updates from the legislative liaison.
Thank you. We'll look forward to a new year and more legislative action to come. Then we'll move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. The board considers each of our two consent agendas with individual votes without discussion. Board members have been provided background material on each item or have discussed it at previous meetings. If any member would like to discuss an item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's superintendent consent agenda includes Human Resources Employment Report, Authorization to Executive Director for January and February, Financial Report, November 2021, Payments of All Bills in the Amount of $4,606,106.20, and Net Payroll in the Amount of $4,2073.46 for the period of November 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2021. Gifts in the Amount of $19,062.66 for the period of November 1st, 2021 through November 30th, 2021. I would hear a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda. The move. Second. Moving seconded, Justin, if you would conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner Zer?
Yes.
Commissioner Clemmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Norden?
Yes. And now move on to the board's consent agenda. The board's consent agenda includes minutes of board meeting, December 6th, 2021, approved summer 2022-23 board meeting schedule, and updated board work calendar to include updated referendum timeline. I would hear a motion to approve the board's consent agenda.
Show more.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. At this time, we will move on to tonight's focus on results. This is the first of our series, I hope, of being able to dig into individual subject areas and really look at the achievement of our students and plans to improve that over the coming year. Tonight's topic is academic performance related to English Language Arts. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson, Andy Van Vliet, and Michelle Rakke.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will be sharing a presentation on strategically using data in an equitable, multi-level system of support with a focus on English Language Arts. Our desired outcomes for the presentation are for you to gain knowledge of Oakley Area School District's English Language Arts data and to understand how we are strategically using data to meet the needs of students and how we monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of programs. Michelle Rakke, Director of Assessment, is going to start us off with sharing district-level ELA data.
Good evening. As a district, we are using multiple measures to drive action plans. The scope of the data for the report tonight is both ELA achievement and growth data. The Oakley Area School District received Accountability Report Cards in November, and tonight, an overview of high-level district data will be shown. The district on these Accountability Report Cards has received an overall score of 68.8, and we meet expectations. When reviewing the priority areas with a focus on ELA, the district is above the state in both achievement and third-grade English Language Arts achievement, which is in the component of On Track to Graduation Priority. The district is below the state in the Growth Priority area in English Language Arts. There is a new priority area starting on this report card for 2021, and this is replacing the Closing Gaps category. The Closing Gaps Priority area has been replaced with Target Growth Outcomes. Closing Gaps was designed to focus on closing achievement gaps for students from traditionally marginalized populations. Over the past years, DPI have found issues with this priority area. So they have adjusted the priority area to Target Growth Outcomes instead of closing the gaps. The score increases the stability of scores year to year by focusing on a single target group of students composed of students in roughly the bottom quartile of performance based on the prior year's assessment results. This score cannot be compared to the state, but should be used for continuous improvement. The district has collaborated with many schools to identify who are the students in the bottom quartile to help use this data with other measures to determine the supports needed for these students. The district looks for trends in data to help determine action steps. Over the years, we have consistently scored above the state in achievement and third-grade English Language Arts, and we have consistently scored below the state in the Growth Priority area. Over the past year, the district has been working on how to strategically use growth data to provide access, opportunity, and create success for all students. As a district, we are striving for a healthy system. In October, we showed this graphic, and we discussed what is a healthy system. So in the next slides, we will be comparing our data to a healthy system, and as this graphic decides, when we have a healthy system, 80% of our students will be achieving a benchmark, with no more than 15% of students receiving targeted group instructions and no more than 5% receiving intensive individual interventions. To achieve this, the district must have a focus on both academic and behavioral strategies in the universal setting. When looking at the English Language Arts Forward data over the past four years, we are achieving above the state, but we are not at 80% of students meeting benchmark. We are experiencing a downward trend in the ELA Forward data. In 2016-17, as seen on the first bar graph, we had 49.9% of our students, grades three through eight, achieving that benchmark, and in 2021, 38.8% of students. When looking at the English Language Arts for ACT Aspire data over the past four years, we are achieving again above the state, but we are not at 80% of students meeting benchmark. We are also experiencing a downward trend in our ELA ACT Aspire data. In 2016-17, we had 47.5% of our students in grades nine and 10 achieving that benchmark, and in 2021, 36.1% of students. When looking at our English Language Arts ACT data over the past four years, we are again achieving above the state, but we are not at that 80% mark. In 2016-17, we had 51% of our students in grades 11 achieving that benchmark, and in 2021, 48% of our students. As the district has started to focus more on growth to help all students achieve, districts and schools, our district and schools, have been reviewing achievement data in correlation with our growth data. Districts and schools are using Star Reading, which is a screener, to help predict how students will perform on the Forward exam and determine the students who are in need of interventions. Star is administered to students in grades one through eight. The picture you are currently viewing on the screen is a dashboard that has been created for the district and schools to be able to easily compare achievement and growth data. Analysis has been done to compare how our students who are achieving in each of the proficiency areas compared to each of the growth areas. To close the learning gap, students need to be performing in the high-growth area, which is signified by the blue bar on the bottom bar graph. When students are experiencing low growth, which is signified by the red bar, the gap will become larger for students. In the fall of 2021, in Star Reading, as depicted on this graph, students who were performing in the Advanced category, almost 90% of those students were experiencing either high or typical growth in reading. When we move to students who are performing in the Proficiency category, which is signified by the green bar on the top in Star Reading, about 78% of those students were experiencing either high or typical growth in reading. Students who are performing in the Basic category of Star Reading, which is the yellow bar on the top, about 63% of those students were experiencing either high or typical growth in reading. And as we move to the Basic category, which is the red bar on the top graph in Star Reading, about 40% of those students were experiencing either high or typical growth in reading. Another piece of data reviewed by schools is grade mark data. When we look at our grade marks, we appear to have a healthy system where 80% of our students are either receiving an A, B, or C in their coursework, signified by the green bars. This data is being used with other data to determine if grades are correlating with student outcomes on state exams. Now we will share some examples of how we are strategically using data at the district level to support student learning and how we monitor and evaluate the effectiveness of programs. This past summer, district leaders participated in a data retreat where we analyzed multiple data points, including ELA data. From this analysis, it was determined we need to create changes in multiple areas, specifically in our Tier One Universal Programming. From this work, we began in developing an action plan to implement and operationalize the EMLSS framework. This multi-year action plan will require intentional planning, focus, and continuous monitoring. By strategically using data, we will be able to measure whether or not our plan is being effective. Another example on how we are strategically using data is to understand where our needs are across the district and then allocate additional resources to meet the needs of those needs. For example, additional elementary additional interventionists at the elementary level were added to support Tier Two and Tier Three supports. Additional positions for second semester are being added to support the learning loss from COVID-19. We are using data to guide our decisions on how best to use our funding sources, including SFR $3 to meet the needs of students. We are also strategically using data to help us understand how programs are meeting the needs of all students and how effective they are over time. As you recall, a healthy system, 80% of students would be successful, and only 20% of students would need additional supports. This data indicates our ELA program is not effective for all students and may not be meeting the needs of all students. A more thorough review is needed. In a program review, we examine multiple reasons why this is occurring. Do we need to realign the curriculum? Do we have high expectations for all students? And does the curriculum support grade level expectations? Have we provided appropriate professional development for staff to deliver the curriculum? Are student materials and textbooks relevant and engaging? Are we using high-leverage instructional strategies? Are we appropriately using data to understand how to meet the needs of students? These are just a few of the many questions we consider when evaluating the effectiveness of a program. By monitoring this data over time, we are able to determine if, after making adjustments to current programs, whether or not the changes implemented are improving the system and being effective. To create systems across the district that are sustainable, equitable, and effective, the School Improvement Plan process was enhanced. This is another example of how we are strategically using data to improve systems. Executive Director of Administration Kim Kohler has been working closely with principals on the School Improvement Plan process. Every school has a SIP plan that is focused on the implementation of the EMLSS in student outcomes. Michelle Rakke, Director of Assessment, and Heather Grant, EMLSS Administrator, have been working closely with principals and leadership teams on how to strategically use data to monitor their plans and measure student growth. Schools are using the SER, which is the School-Wide Implementation Review Tool. This tool analyzes school systems within their school that measure the effectiveness of Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three supports. School improvement plans are intended to be fluid and adjusted as needed. Especially this school year, the impact of COVID has had a significant impact on the plans that were put in place at the beginning of the school year. Here are some examples of some SIP goals from a sampling of schools developed this school year. Every goal includes a systems focus with a student outcome result. To create change in student outcomes, system changes are necessary. Schools are action planning to create system change, and are monitoring the progress of systems through the SER, short surveys completed by staff, and student outcome data. Now we will share some examples on how schools are strategically using data. These examples come from Putnam Heights Elementary School. Three times a year, at benchmark assessments, school-wide teams analyze the academic growth and proficiency of all students. Teams disseminate data by gender, white, non-white, English language learners, and special education demographic categories. From this work, they plan classroom differentiation and Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. On monthly basis, Tier Two and Tier Three teams analyze progress monitoring data to determine students' rate of success and response to the intervention. They analyze data to understand how to support students' academic and social-emotional needs across all settings. Weekly, teams review data and provide options and resources to staff supporting students' needs across all settings. Grade level teams analyze assessment data to inform instruction and plan for individual needs at the classroom. At South Middle School, teams analyze STAR and FORWARD data, last year's grades, first quarter grades, and attendance to collaborate with staff on which students need supports for optimal growth. They collaborate on the instructional practices, classroom environment, and skills needed for students. Staff use the Universal Design for Learning Framework to design lessons and incorporate avid strategies to help all students engage in content. At Memorial High School, teams are using student survey data to plan and adjust Character Strong lessons and extended learning time, ELTs. Teams are using ninth and 10th grade DNF lists to provide intervention to students during ELT intervention times. Teams are considering shifting ELA nine instructors from their duty time to intentionally schedule ninth-grade students that are currently failing ELA nine to these instructors for a more intensive intervention. Michelle will now share some of the tools that have been developed to support this work. So tools that we have created in the last six months for schools to be able to strategically use data are Data Warehouse Dashboards, which focus on growth, which we looked at prior. And those dashboards are dynamic, and they allow schools to be able to dissegregate that data quickly. And they're easy to be able to conduct root cause analysis and continue to ask within their team questions about the data they're looking at and then help find the answers to that. We also have created Qualtrics, in Qualtrics, SIP dashboards. And these dashboards, which you can see a visual of it on the right-hand side, this is where all of the data is for their building leadership team. It's either linked there or it's stored there. And then they also have in their access to protocols that they can use when analyzing the data. We have also been providing professional development during principal meetings on these tools, and we are working with schools to create capacity within their leadership teams by modeling the protocols and helping their building leadership teams then use that protocol with their own teams. This is another example of a tool that is created for schools, which is a leveled report that you are viewing on the screen. We are working closely with schools to create tools that help them strategically use data like this. And this report includes many different things, from attendance to discipline grade mark, bottom quartile from the Accountability Report Cards, ACT Aspire ACT Forward scores. And we work with the schools to look at, how do you use this data? How do you filter it to start to determine who are the students that have the needs? And is the data correlating, their grades correlating to their ACT or ACT Aspire scores? For them then to determine the intervention blocks for students based on the data that they are looking at. So with that, we'd like to close by sharing with you that our goal is to have an intentional focus on the implementation of the EMLSS. We are approaching this through an equity lens with a multi-year action plan that will include all components of this framework. When fully operationalized, all students will have access, opportunities, and experience success. So with that, we'll take questions.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Michelle, for this information today. What questions and comments for the administrative team? Dr. Johnson?
Commissioner Lyons, after that, sorry. Yeah. And my apologies for not being able to try to find some of this. But can you, what's the operational definition of growth? Like, what is growth?
Yes, so on a screener, students, the STAR assessment, when a student has two or more scores, then they get a student growth percentile. And within that student growth percentile, what happens is they get put in with their first assessment, they get put into a bucket with students that have scored like them, and then it puts them on a trajectory of how much growth did they make during that time period? And so it's a score from 1 to 99 that they do get. And the thing about the growth score is every student can get a 99. Whereas that's not the case when you look at a percentile rank.
So even the students in the achievement have a growth score. So each student, regardless, has a growth component. And is it assumed in those students who are in the achievement category that their growth scores are higher than those students that fall within?
In the Advanced category.
In the Advanced.
You can put in a different bucket, so they're looking at students like them. You know, they may not have as big of a spread of a scale score when they may only move, you know, 20 to 30 scale score, but they may get a 99. Where a student in the below basic, they get put in a bucket with kids that are scoring at that same level, and it looks at how many scale score points did they change over time? Does that make sense? So it's very relevant to where you're at. And like I said, every student can get a 99, which is the top number with growth.
Two more questions, and I'll open, let the rest of my colleagues ask. But could you, I guess I'm a little bit confused, and I understand the ambitiousness of educators, but when you guys provide this longitudinal data, so we've never been at 80%? Where does 80% come from? And why this 80%? Why does it have to? Like, I'm just curious. Why do we need to have this 80% as the mark? Is that, so in this goal, healthy system, what you've presented, we've never actually really been past like 51%. And I guess for me, is energy and our commitment better served of shrinking potentially those, these other areas? Or is it kind of, we're hoping just to tackle all of it at once? And I guess I'm just really confused. Why the 80%?
I believe the 80% comes from the response to intervention. As we think about, we think about all students and being able to meet the needs of all students, we need to be able to provide that continuum of supports for every student because they're all different. But in a healthy system, about 80% of students should be successful. So it does sound, especially when you see our data, that we are a long ways from that. But that certainly is what we want to strive for. We know that, I'm going to go back to a slide. Here, that when we look at this data here, you can see that we are a long ways from getting that 80%. But what we are looking at is, we prefer to see our data trending up and going down as we are noticing it here. So over time, what we are wanting to have is an upward trend. We know that that is going to take time, especially if we think about the work that is needed to increase those scores. It's systematic work that takes time, and we should hopefully see some changes over time. Will we ever get to 80%? I hope so. That is a significant goal, and it's something that we are going to continue to strive to get to. Did you add anything to that, Michelle?
What I would add to that are, research has been done through the RTI Center of schools that are running under healthy systems, and they are achieving at that 80%. And that's where, like, all things are aligned. And one of the things that we, why we moved to a growth model is because it's very hard. If a student is in below basic, it may take them, if we have our systems in place, it could take them two or three years to get to move to basic. And so by growth, we can show they're making into that high-growth area, we know that they're going to start to close that gap at a quicker rate. So that is easier for a teacher and for schools to be able to measure because it's more sensitive.
Before we go back to Dr. Johnson, I just want to follow up just specifically on that. I appreciate the, you know, 80% being this sort of mega-goal. And of course, the acknowledgement that we're not at that. And of course, we can see against state averages, most of the state is not operating in that way. So it's not, my question is, as a board, part of our responsibility for governance is to evaluate whether or not we are making reasonable progress toward that goal. So it's great to have a high goal, and I hope that we can get there. I believe that we can with enough time and care. One question, I don't know if it's a question or if it's a request for something to come back. What are the interstitial, like, what are the interim goals? How can we, as a How can we as a board, when we come around to R2 next year for the ELA component, how can we look at the district and say adequate progress is being made? You know, I have some education background, but I don't think I'm well informed to say I think it's a 3% change, you know, I think it's a 1% change. I guess what I want to know, and I think what the board needs to know is, when we see this data next year, I think we all know that going down is not acceptable, but how much should we be striving to go up? And I'd, I'd like to, I don't want to, you don't need to answer right now unless you already say like this is our interim goal, but I would like to have an idea of what does the administration think are appropriate, an appropriate step for the board to be able to say, yes, we did accomplish that. Or for Superintendent Johnson to be able to come to us and say, we are making reasonable progress towards our goals because we hit these marks. And I, I would like those to come out, that can be, you know. And I, I think as we go through perhaps some of these other subject areas, I, I do want to see those. That's going to help us be better able to account for the progress of the district.
Just add one thing to that is, as part of developing the action plan that we will monitor, the multi-year action plan, I can't give you specifics right now because we're in the process of that. We also, we too want to be able to measure whether or not our plan is being effective. So perhaps some of the pieces or the indicators that we use to measure that progress may be the same indicators that you are able to use. We're certainly thinking about that as we're developing that plan as a way to share our progress and help guide our work as well.
That would be great. Thank you. Dr. Johnson, thank you for giving a little bit of time back to you.
Can I give one more thing that I think there's going to be, I can't give you a percentage either right now. One of the things that we would like to see is, we know, like this graph is beautiful because when we have students in that high growth area, we will start to see the gaps closing. And so as schools are focusing more on this growth because they are intervening on students, this is going to be a measure. Because if you notice, we're already identifying a trend that we're okay with our advanced and our proficient, because we would like this to be at about 80% also. But we start to see a difference with basic and both basics. So now we've identified an area, we have to start, you know, having some action plans around this. And then.
Right, and I see in one of the SIP plans, right, there's the, our, you know, 80% of our students will hit 35 on the SGP. That's again, that's probably a bigger goal than they're going to hit in the next year. And the board, of course, understands that even if it goes down one year, that does not necessarily, that means we had a problem this year, we have to fix it, but you know, we're going to have variation from year to year. But even with, even with the growth model, and particularly with the growth model actually, because you're right, if we can move them up into these higher levels, especially if they're in the high growth, they're going to catch up for wherever they're behind or exceed. So we, we still need to have an idea of how, how much should we really be looking for this? Like what are you, as our educational experts, going to say? We actually had a really successful year because we, we moved the needle this amount. And, you know, it doesn't always have to be, I think, I think a hard goal, you know, a number is important. Whether or not we hit it, we can evaluate how close did we get? How, you know, was it an aggressive goal or an easy goal? But I think it's important to have, even, even with growth, how much should we expect to move the needle in this year? Or, and of course, over time, until we hit and then hopefully surpass our healthy system? Again, sorry, and thank you, Dr. Johnson.
No problem. And I, I guess for me, where it'd be an interesting discussion and debate moving forward, I, 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 I would be, I would be one of those people that I'll be honest with you, given the, the difference between this 2,900 students of data that are basic and below basic and 2,000 advanced and proficient, so that's a 69% difference. If the needle moved to decrease in the basic and below basic, and the numbers didn't fluctuate that much in terms of that, that advanced and proficient, for me, that means that actually, whatever intervention, and what I'm interested in, what were those interventions that were used to actually make that shift? You know, like whether or not the advance and the proficient piece for me, I, I, we can go back. I guess what I'm a little bit troubled by, and I appreciate in that presentation that you, that you, you all identify that, so target group outcomes replaced achievement gap data. I guess where I'm disappointed, where I would like to see us potentially go, that whole 80%, 80% of our students will, you know, will achieve this? Could, could, could you all specifically, looking at previous achievement gap data, maybe this is a percentage, but where we move the needle in decreasing the achievement gap? Because what, I, I, I would like to kind of see where, where has our achievement gap data longitudinally been? And kind of what, what improvements there? Because once again, if we see improvements in the decrease in achievement gap data, mathematically and statistically, we'll see increases in some of these, these other areas. So that, that 80%, because it's quite possible that, that 80% potentially could be achieved. And just like all of Wisconsin, the achievement, achievement gap data has not moved. That's not progress. And, and so if, if we could potentially have some, some measure there, I know this is, this, this measure replaced the closing the gap data, so you know, if, if, if we could, if we could have seen that, you know, I think, and I think we have it in what, 2018, 2019, we were below the state, but it, you know, was, was all of Wisconsin is bad in, in terms of that achievement gap piece. And so I, I would be, I would be curious, because for, once again, you know, if we see 80% or 75% of our students get there, but we decrease, since everyone wants a number or whatever, our achievement gap, our target group outcomes by five, to me, that's a better win. But more importantly, how did we do that? And, and, and that's, that's kind of where I, if, if we can somehow figure that piece out, to have a sub-goal besides the, the overall achievement piece, another piece as it relates to decreasing what was formerly our closing gap, which is now our target group outcomes, I think that would be, I, I think that would be very, very important in my, in my perspective. I'll hold the remainder of my comments, but that, that's, those are some of the things that really, as I was looking through this, that just kind of really stood out. So if that's possible, I, I, I would encourage us to move in that particular direction. That, because that would actually be not only proactive, but not, not sure how many other school districts. I, I think in, in Wisconsin, as long as the overall percentages move, we're typically comfortable because systemically and historically, the achievement gaps are just there. That's Wisconsin. And unfortunately, in education, we've accepted that, so.
I think what you're asking for is that target group outcome, looking at that bottom quartile, like what is the bottom of our scale score and what is that range? And that's what we're working with schools on, is what is your range in that bottom quartile? And how do we move those students in that bottom quartile continually? And so over time, we'll be able to look at, are we moving that scale score up so that our bottom isn't where it is today?
Yeah, and importantly though, is actually, if we, if you, if we're going to throw this 80% out, overall, throw out a percentage there actually for the target group outcomes as well, and, and to hold ourselves accountable to that.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Lyons.
Oh, you know, one of the things that you mentioned was interventions on the DNF list. And I'm wondering kind of what that looks like? And if that's something that's relatively new and that you're approaching that just in this year? And what, what was swimming around in my head is, as, as data folks that are measuring student success, I imagine that you are looking at annualized data that's pre-COVID and then data that's post-COVID and, and just the anomaly and the upheaval that's occurred because of that. And what was, what I was thinking was, are you approaching a way that you're collecting data, using it, and implementing it in a much different way because of those couple of years? And what's that look like? And, and my, my focus was really specifically on the DNF intervention because I knew that in that, in, in, in the last academic year, the DNF list kind of, you know, expanded quite a bit, if, if that was an outcome of that.
We have been using that DNF list, and this is a good report of how that's being used, is if, there, you'll notice like that is a level three for ELA data. And what that means is those students are getting a DNF. And what we're doing with schools is then we're taking that data and we're correlating that to, one, their attendance. So then they look at, okay, is attendance a problem? And then if it's attendance, okay, our intervention has to be trying to get the kids to school so that they can learn. Then they're taking those students and they're correlating it to their ACT Aspire data. And are they, is the correlation, is it correlating? You know, how they're achieving on that state assessment to their DNF? If it is correlating, then they're, are in the basic or below basic, then they're digging in more into that data on those students and saying, where are their gaps? And so we're taking that, and we're digging deeper into that state assessment data to see, you know, okay, what couldn't their interventions for their ELT time, which is that extended learning time? What can that look like? So is it missing assignments, which is a behavior thing? Or is it actual missing skills that we need to intervene? So they're really doing some hard and fast work on trying to meet the needs of all students, which is very different than what we've done in the past.
Representative Locum. Are the interventions with students tracked in some sort of data? And if so, in the future, is there a plan to demonstrate the effect of interventions on testing?
So we do track, and we are more systematic at the elementary level of tracking our interventions, and we are getting better at that. High school, this is a whole new path for us, and so we're getting there. And first, we have to determine what the interventions are at the high school level before we really start to track them and understand if they're being effective. We do have some data at the elementary level that would help us with that.
And then my second question was with how much you can aggregate data, from my perspective, it should be fairly easy to identify certain departments or teachers which do play a large effect in increasing whatever scores they are involved with. So my question is, when designing the interventions at the middle and high school level, are those teachers or departments involved? And if not, why is that?
Yes, so we have this year, and it has been significantly different this year because of our instructional coaches that we have at, at the secondary levels. They are looking at this data. And you'll notice Mandy spoke to this here at, like at Memorial, that's why they've shifted that ELA nine instructor time, so that they can be the ones working with those students during that time for those skills. And they're having an input on who are those kids that should be in those classes in that extended learning time. So they are having input.
Okay. With regards to the interventionists you mentioned that were hired, is there any collaboration between the teachers and the interventionists? Because speaking with faculty, it appeared that this was relatively separate, and it appears that more collaboration between teachers who are ultimately responsible for learning and interventionists would provide a greater impact.
So one of the important pieces of an EMLSS framework is, I'll point you to this key feature right here is collaboration. So as we think and work to operationalize this, we have to put in structures that support exactly what you're talking about, is the collaboration structures that allow for that to happen. So it's work that we need to do across our district so that all of the right people are around the table when having those discussions, and then continue to be around the table to monitor that progress and develop plans on how best to support that student. So certainly something that we're striving to do and need to make improvements in that area.
Dr. Johnson?
Two points, I, I was, I was actually able to go over to Flan Elementary and observe one of these exercises of collaborative, collaborative teaching. It was, it was pretty, I thought it was pretty, pretty dynamic. I think the, the, the next challenge would be is, you know, how do we, how do we somewhat capture that both quantitatively and qualitatively and, and spread out those pieces that potentially work? And, you know, and I, I think potentially if, if some of it really is as dynamic as what I was able to observe over at Flan, I think overall the district would be able to benefit. And so I, I appreciate the, the, the teacher as well as the instructional coach that allowed me to observe that process. I, I, I guess for me, one of the other follow-ups in, on slide, what is it, 14? When we look at the secondary, this high school grade mark data, I, I guess for me, it's somewhat, I, I, I view it as misleading, so I, if, if you could talk me through, so, what does a grade indicate? If you want me to assume, we're doing really, like we're at 80% in terms of like grade marks? One potentially would assume then that our performance maybe on these standardized tests would be, so what does, what does, what does a grade, what does, what does a grade mean? So are we talking about competencies at a certain level? Because if so, then this 80% should be indicative of potentially what we see on those. And so do, is that the piece where you're just looking at those, those, those correlation piece? Because it, for me, this, this graph just by grade marks really, that doesn't mean anything to me. Care of this with how this, this grade mark data is reflected on the standardized outcomes that we, we're using as our artifacts? So has that been, you guys examined that? Then, okay.
Yes, so this, this graph is one of those things that brought us to one of our action plan items for teaching and learning, which is to evaluate our grading practices. And so we have started that work, and we have been meeting with secondary principals to start to determine what is the meaning of a grade? And what do we, we're starting to work through, like what do we need to do to transform our grading systems? So that work is being done, we're in the infancy stages, and it's, there's going to be a lot of work around that.
And we were purposeful in including this slide to show the mismatch that we have. It is certainly a pretty graph with the 80%, but it, it doesn't correlate to what we're seeing on state assessments.
That work having anything to do with moving away from giving letter grades? Because not useful. And I think we've done so at the elementary level. We're talking about moving up, moving that up to the second, to the secondary level?
That is a possibility, and it's part of the conversation.
I mean, I could geek out about it. So that's not what the board is here to do. Sorry, Dr. Johnson, did you have a more?
No, 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 no. That, that would be, it would be an interesting debate. Yeah, so it's, I think it's counterintuitive to all of the metrics that actually our, our young people actually potentially need moving forward. But I, there are conversations about doing the same thing at the, at the university level as well. So at the university level, so yeah, that's interesting. So thank you for those questions. I'll summarize some stuff, just want to, I'll share with Superintendent Johnson, kind of share with you just some other follow-up pieces.
Professor Clements.
So the EMLSS focuses on what's happening in the school as an ecosystem. And one perspective that I attempt to bring to our work is that a lot of the challenges or advantages that students bring to school are things that are happening outside the classroom, things that even have occurred in their family in a previous generation, the resources they have available, the support they have at home, and things like that. So how are we trying to, you know, think outside of our silo? Because this, this whole system is about breaking down silos and looking at the whole child and how to help them in their, their academic and social emotional journey? What are we doing to attempt to partner with other organizations or other institutions or seek to address some of the things that students are bringing with them into the school environment which are affecting how they're progressing? Which, which is to say, you know, life is complicated, and districts are often asked And districts are often asked to uh account for how students are performing academically, although many of the challenges that they're that they are bringing to the school districts are well beyond our control. But we're we're accountable for that in effect. And so um, you know, this is not, this this is not that presentation. But I'm I'm hoping that um in future presentations, we could try to discuss how these things are fit, try to fit together. And obviously, this is not something that districts are well suited to do, especially given our current funding situation. But um, yeah, I'm hoping that we can hear more more about this because I think that many of the things that that hold us, hold students back um and frankly also affect how staff are do doing are are things that are happening outside the district. And although that is the case, there's hopefully things that we can do by being mindful and intentional of that fact um that we can see the results in the classroom and we can see the results in employee performance and retention and things like that. So that's kind, that's kind of a question slash comment in terms of how we're approaching this general mission.
I think I could, if you don't mind, I could step in for a sec. I think what we're going to find, Commissioner Clements, is just the with S R three funding. And we'll be sharing that with all our families in the community. Uh, we've already shared uh the survey with our system leaders and a couple of parent groups, for example. That's asking that question, like, what do we have that's working so far and what else would you like to see? So that could be utilized for part of S R three is that funding for students that really have significant hardships and families outside that school day. Because we we can't control the controllables when students are there, whether it's seven thirty to three oh five or what have you along that scale. But it's it's the other. And especially with COVID, that's just totally magnified it and exacerbated it. That's why we have to ask those questions of our community and especially um underrepresented groups of folks that might be in poverty or what have you. We're going to get some, I think we're going to get some great data on it to be able to prioritize some funding for that.
I would also add to that, I won't be able to completely answer your question, Commissioner Clements, but I will bring your attention to this foundational component on the outside, family and community partnerships. This is a foundational component because the implementation of this framework cannot solely be the responsibility. We can't rely solely on a school district to do this. We need the support of our community to fully um operi operationalize and implement this so that student needs are are met. You will see that family engagement is part of every step and every tier. And you will also see that universal and then tier two and tier three also are both academic and behaviors because they work hand in hand. So when we say fully operationalize the EMLSS, we will have to work very closely with our school, with our community in order to um meet the needs of all students as we think about the continuum of supports that is needed for some of our students.
Seeing no other comments, I'll just close out with one other thing that I had at the presentation before coming tonight. One of the patterns that I've sort of noticed as we've looked at more and more results I did is that the administration often brings us examples of school improvement plans as evidence of, you know, these are the things that we're doing at a school level. I think it makes a lot of sense to look at those school improvement plans because of course that's the unit that is connecting with our individual students. One thing that I'd like in order to help again monitor, you know, when we come around is I'd like to know are our schools successful with their student, with their plans? And again, where they don't have, where they have more of a grand uh goal, that that maybe this is, this is our, you know, sort of mega goal, then um does the, would the, does the overall administration or does the school principal, would they say, you know, we've made reasonable progress towards that? And I'll I'll uh second what you were saying, Doctor Johnson, you know, it may, it may be important also to get a little bit finer and see where is that progress being made? Because certainly the board and district's commitment to educational equity means that we're trying to work with those students that need the most and get them the access that they need. So we may need a little bit more granularity, but I'd like to see, um, not as, I don't care which schools made their goal and which didn't, but I'd like to know, you know, are our our schools making reasonable progress towards their individualized goals? That could help, that'll help the board understand, is the district making reasonable progress? It will hopefully then help us all also understand that, you know, are we setting reasonable goals? You know, what are our expectations? Because I think through this governance process, that's what we're looking for, is how do we set achievable goals? And then and then hit them, and if not, have an accurate assessment to where to go. So I I guess as an additional indicator maybe for next year, and Justin, if you want to note this down is in a big list of additional indicators that we're asking, where I'd like to see just a summary of, you know, thirteen out of twenty schools made reasonable progress towards their goals and within, you know, that that target group sort of outcome, you know, met or exceeded that as well. You know, that sort of thing, and a summary then, you know, for what the board is there. And then that can be bigger. But if if we're going to continue to see school improvement plans as a marker of this is what we're attempting to do to improve our results, then we need to know, are those being effective as well? Go ahead, Doctor Johnson.
I I I guess I I would, I I would like to, you know, I I think as we, as we make these suggestions and, you know, I I think I'm 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 relegated to the fact that uh uh we're all, mainly our teachers and 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 building administrators are 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 doing, doing more with less. And so I think my uh my my efforts, you know, it would be uh 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 this is not in addition to potentially uh exploring replacing of something. And or uh, you know, if we're examining these SIPs, it 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 potentially would be quite possible that uh some SIPs have shared concerns. And one in, one individual school was able to address those shared concerns more so than another. And then we can get some cross communication uh 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 happening there. So it's, you know, I think as we, you know, as we're adding to the list, and and this is a, this is probably a a a the better indicator that's probably, that could replace something that's currently on there or 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 some, but that's kind of how how we do. But I was a great point about the about the SIPs and uh kind of that idea of progress, so that good point.
Sure, I, yeah, I I I want to agree that I'm not, we don't want to be adding things. So refining it and saying, I, so I've just noticed that when the administrative team comes to us with examples of what are, what are our plans to reach this next goal, oftentimes it it comes with a school improvement plan. And I think it seems to me, you know, on its face, that that should be a powerful method because, you know, who knows their schools better than the the principals and teachers and staff working with those students? Uh, so if we're going to use them, let's make sure that then we're able to evaluate them and and use them for that progress. So thank you, Manny, thank you, Michelle. Look forward to the next, the next time we see you. I think we maybe have one penciled in here coming up maybe in January, but sure, we'll, we'll try to give you as much lead time as possible.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move on to monitoring district results for the evening. We have two items. The first is the full monitoring report for OE four, student success. So Superintendent Johnson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Um, with this monitoring report, just to to share with the board, um worked quite a bit with Jim Schmidt in uh in the initial stages of this with the first draft. Jim's got a lot of history in the district and and I was able to spend some time with him before that first draft um on my interpretation and then uh the indicators. Uh, there was a tremendous amount of work done by Manny Van Vliet and Becky Graff, both of whom were here tonight, obviously. So when there are questions tonight, I think those three may be, and I know they're ready to be able to illustrate certain types of things, but there was a tremendous amount of data in this, and I think I did share this with the board, that, you know, there are some that there were reports that we just didn't clip. It was just the entire report and that's fine. Um, but we are in compliance with exception, as noted in the evidence. With the, you know, with this reporting period, you know, the majority of our student success indicators were in compliance. We draw a lot from our results number two monitoring report for these. And we look forward to in the future, when we do monitoring reports for three, R three and R four, we would continue to add those. In this district, uh, you know, we do a a very good job and the evidence shows that of disaggregating and studying the student data in different demi uh demographic subgroups to promote student success. As it, as we allude to it a couple of times, you know, look to R two, there was an immense amount of work that went into R two. However, there are two parts of this um in this monitoring report where in revising the process for curriculum review, alignment and adoption of resources and completing that process by June of twenty twenty two. As many of you know, it's very difficult to get our staff to be able to collaborate. I think Becky Graff, first staff, Manny Van Vliet, others in the organization in September did a tremendous job in getting people to collaborate on these items. Unfortunately, with growing quarantine numbers, staff absences, people having to cover absences internally, we just don't have that opportunity. We haven't had the opportunity in October and November. So we have to kind of reshape that thinking and retool a bit. It's not an excuse, it's just an explanation. But I was heartened by two staff members, uh, one of the first times that we had met in September, popped into my office, just popped in, hi, I'm so and so. I just want to share with you that we really appreciated that, that we have not done that in some time. Uh, they really appreciated that work and they they know that it's critical to our growth and achievement of our students. And it's and it's critical for their growth, the staff members, to be able to share ideas replicating that success. When we have certain types of blips going up, let's try to determine where that is. Also felt that through the evidence, we have a a a healthy amount of instructional programming opportunities for students in specific specialized areas. We're differentiating instructional models to meet the needs of students. However, again, we go back to the June of twenty twenty two to collaborate. We have, we have quite a few tasks to accomplish in the next few months about the careful monitoring and evaluation of our new and innovative programs. We want to make sure that those are helping students achieve. And if they're new and innovative, but they aren't, we really have to, we really have to um examine those and make decisions on those, just not because, well, we've always had this or we've had this for some time. Because that's what frustrates teachers and principals alike, where, okay, we continue to do, but we get the same results. But anyway, those processes will be completed by June of twenty twenty two in preparation for the future. The last part, I think it was um OE four dot nine, and this is a fairly simple one, is that we're not in compliance with our environmental aspects of textbook and materials acquisition. In our selection processes, we will be, that's something fairly easy to add to that rubric when we do have textbook or materials adoptions as well. So I just wanted to share that with the group as kind of that overall summary. And at this point, love to take questions, comments. And like I I said, if Mr. Schmidt, Ms. Van Vliet, Ms. Graff could be able to to answer questions, that would be fantastic.
Thank you. Questions or comments on OE four for Superintendent Johnson? Doctor Johnson.
Thank you uh once again for uh providing a very large document to uh go through. What what I, if if possible, if we're making notes, for me, um OE four uh five, for indicators one and two, could we uh specifically have a component that speaks to uh opportunities for our students with disabilities in there? So I I I think the uh uh that, what is it, the gateway transition program potentially could fall there. I I know it's, I know it's lower down here somewhere in one of the others, but uh, you know, I, it seems like we uh we we were attempting to be as intentional as possible as identifying uh uh as many of those groups that if we could just specifically have uh 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 have a a indicator moving forward that speaks to uh those uh uh those students with disabilities as it relates to uh uh for uh as it pertains to evidence uh for for indicators room two. So, you know, I think it, what's included there kind of captures, I I think it just, but when we say with specifically to OE four point five, all student, you know, and more specialized areas, I I would, I I would be wanting to argue that a a a transition program that provides potential vocational and independent living opportunities for for students with disabilities are just as dynamic as some of these other components uh components here. So it's really interesting. Hopefully, we have some measures uh being taken uh as we start off with this gateway transition program. So that was the, that was the one glare, one of the one glaring things, even though I see it, it's mentioned below, but I think in OE four, five, with one and two, if we could specifically have just broadened kind of like that group.
Do we know that, thank you.
Question is there?
Guys, um, I think one of the things that I had a question about, Mike, or just kind of where it would fit or how it would be addressed, but some of the the um programming, I guess the, whether whether we call it innovative programming or um programming specific to meet the needs of different um types of learners, maybe perhaps you know, suggesting how we are providing our staff with opportunities for professional development in these areas? Because I think sometimes, you know, we we know the way that we teach, we know, we know, you know, really well. And sometimes it's hard to make time for um new practices or new ideas or, you know, heck, who goes to a con- a conference, right? Where we can learn or collaborate with people who have different ideas. But I don't see that really expressed um anywhere in here. And I don't know if if that would fall under, you know, four point six or four point seven, but just how, I guess, you know, could go under four point five too maybe, but the, just where, where are we offering staff opportunities? I mean, I know there's, there's a whole host of them, whether it's, you know, every teacher, a leader or or various other, you know, conference opportunities for educators. How do we support them um as they try new things or want to develop a new system or structure within their classroom or their school?
I think I could, I could take this to start, and if Jim or Mandy or Becky wanted to add, just what I've realized in the last eighteen months here would be, for example, I I think it maybe could fit in the future under four point seven. When you encourage new and innovative programs and practices, I think if we evaluate and we notice, hmm, we're not moving the needle, we should maybe look back at professional development. I think one, one thing I've noticed thus far would be the Avid program at the middle school level. And we could replicate that at the high school level in terms of having that specific training that needs to be done at a certain time for people to be on, uh, staff members to be on an avid site team or to be able to teach the Avid elective, so to speak. And I think, I think those types that when South had started, I believe, four to five years ago, Mr. Schmidt, I do believe, I think that's about the timeframe, three years ago, I'm sorry. I think that professional development, and that's, that's really a requirement, that you have to have that training to be able to teach those courses or to be on the site team, to have that understanding and depth. You know, we have a principal here tonight, Mr. Scootley, who, um, although North Star had not started that program this year, he still did that training and he sought more knowledge on that so he and his staff could be better prepared when they implement. I think that is a key component, I think it could fit in four point seven if in the future to add that indicator. Because if it's a good program and our staff have those talents after being professionally developed, I think it's, it's probably a, you know, we have that resource um to be able to find more success with that. I'll just share that. to be able to find more success with that. I'll just share that. And if there's anything else that Becky or Mandy or Jim could illustrate, that's great too. But I think, but that's a very fair question. You know, if we haven't succeeded, well, let's look at, did we prepare our staff? Did we have the funding? Did we have the professional development? That time necessary.
Right. I think, I mean, I think that's very, I think that's very valid as well. But what I, I guess what I was referring to was, you know, Avid didn't just come out of nowhere. It came from, you know, inspiration or education on the part of, of probably one person or maybe a handful of people in one building. And I think the, you know, what ends up happening sometimes with these innovative programs or ideas is they just become very small and they're very, um, you know, I think Avid's been one that has been lucky to kind of get a foothold and, and it's great that, you know, that opportunity can now be shared across our district. I think that, that what I, what I see or what I, what I'm curious about is where in our educators' professional lives are they supported in exploring new and, and different ideas, whether that's in, in the classroom or, or just in an educational capacity? Whether that's, you know, literally going out and finding something new that might, that might, you know, meet a certain goal or a certain target that they're working on. And then how do we, you know, how do, you know, when we, when we make it into a program or, or, um, you know, something like the Arctic Zone or a Leap Zone or whatever it might be? It just, how, how do we support educators in, in that, in the seed? You know, the, the seed stage where they, they just want to go and, and find something or, you know? That's kind of what I was referring to more than anything. I think what you're saying is, you know, once there's a success, how do we support staff in, in replicating that success? But I'm just even wondering how, how do we support our, the, the further education of our teachers into new and innovative forms of education, I guess?
That's an OE for staff. Six. Six. It sounds to me, like what you're talking about is how are we supporting the generation of new and innovative programming, like new programs? How are we supporting bringing more of those to our district? Is that kind of where your question is?
No, I, I do think it's here. I mean, I think it's related to, to recognizing a need in the, you know, in our, in our classrooms or in our, in our schools. And then being able to, to collaborate or find resources or access resources or, or, um, you know, I, I think so much of teaching is experimentation and, you know, I, I want our teachers to, to have the creativity to try new things for the sake of student success. And, you know, I, I just wonder, I mean, maybe you're right, maybe it does fall under a different monitoring report, but I'm just wondering when the outcome is, have a system for, you know, trying out new and innovative ideas to meet different types of learners where they're at, right? Wherever that might be. Well, we have to have a system for supporting our educators at, to get there. Like, how, how do they even have an idea? How do they even know to propose a program? If they're just up to here all the time and they never get to use that creative? How, how can we expect an outcome if we don't give them a system for for accessing that and, you know, for accessing those ideas for themselves, I guess?
So I would, I would say that probably does fall under four point seven there, as you already mentioned, that that would be a place where, you know, the administration could show the board how that's being done. But, you know, there could, there could be other places. So, you know, as you, commissioners, or look through some of the policies that we have in place, if you see other places where you think that could be highlighted, I would say, you know, send that, send that on. And, and I think we were saying, you know, the same thing is how are we supporting our teachers to bring us new creative ideas that could then be spread across the district if they're as successful as we hope they are? But I, I do think four, seven is probably the first point of, of entry for us to be able to look at that support. Dr. Johnson?
In anticipation for OE four nine, they're not in compliance, that it will be gathered by, by, by January. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of curious i- i- if you're already in the gathering stage and I assume that you have to be, even if it's three, uh, two weeks from now, but, uh, would, would it be possible to, um, when, when I read this, would it be possible to tease out, uh, what this looked like between our, our, our virtual school offering and our traditional face-to-face brick and mortar offered? And then are there potentially some pieces in terms of uh, environmental friendliness that, uh, you know, I remember, uh, it was pretty cool when I was doing the observations. I think it was at, I think it was at the middle school. They were at elementary school, elementary teachers did not actually, uh, uh, send me, uh, an email, but I think it was at the middle school where in, in an attempt to prevent the, uh, closed contact, they, students were actually working, I think, on their iPads. And the, the teachers themselves were correcting assignments that were plugged in there. And so I, I, I see that as a way of potentially, if there are, uh, eBooks or, you know, I, my students always get upset with me, but I, everything's now on just PDF. We don't use, we don't technically use a textbook unless we have to. And so, uh, you know, how much have we moved toward that where, uh, it's, it's available? So I'm just curious, or, or if you already know kind of what potentially will be in this, the report, would some of that information be included? Yes or no, or?
Well, I guess we certainly could. And I'll, I'll leave it up to, I saw Becky and, and Mandy nod a little bit. I experienced it today at Sherman. With students and iPads and the ability to use, um, the literary footprint to then be able to choose certain units for, for their, um, independent reading. They had some choice in what they were to read. So that we don't, okay, let's all, let's all grab the textbooks in the back. As first graders, kids had it right there. And, you know, I was able to project certain things from my computer as well. But I'd be willing to, I'd definitely be willing to allow Mandy and Becky to share a little bit with that, what they've experienced, what they know what's going on in our district right now.
I think it's that whole piece of the, uh, uh, e-learning module or, 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 you know, e, e-textbook versus a, a printed textbook, is cost analysis that are done there? Availability to potentially share amongst school, share amongst staff. So I'm just curious if, I guess my overall concern or question was, would that be part of what will potentially be provided by, or be added by January three, twenty?
With the, the change to us being a one-to-one device, it's like that this piece has certainly changed. So, um, this, our process has not been added to our textbook adoption process because we weren't one-to-one. So that was to consider online resources and some, what of a barrier and a challenge. But now that we are one-to-one, um, we look at resources differently. Certainly adding, um, the environmental, environmental impact to a textbook adoption, certainly is stuff that makes sense to embed. It's part of our process now. Certainly approach that differently than we did a few years ago.
I would add our last adoption with our ELA at the secondary level. Studiesync is an entirely online digital platform. And we did order workbooks, but we're reevaluating how those workbooks are being used. And we might just continue the purchase of the workbooks and, and go entirely digital. This one small example.
We've seen no other comments at this point. I think it's probably appropriate that we move to a vote on the monitoring report. Of course, the motion to start would be to approve and accept, which means that the board agrees with Superintendent Johnson's evaluation of the district's status. And then, of course, we have the opportunity to amend from there if the board disagrees in any way. But this time I would ask for a motion to approve and accept OE four. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing that will call the question, motion to approve and accept OE four as submitted by Superintendent Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye. Now opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Well, now move on to our first draft of OE ten, budget and financial planning. Superintendent Johnson, I'll turn it over to you and I'm sure Abby Johnson as well.
Oh, absolutely. You got that correct, Commissioner Nordin. With this, uh, with OE ten, budget and financial planning, the interpretation, what we wanted to do for this one, like we had done, I believe, the, the past board meeting, is to, to place the interpretation first with some definitions. You expect the superintendent or the designate to bring forward that budget ensuring our sustainability of the district. It's aligned to our goals, operational expectations and results. It needs to be clear to the board and public. And it needs to be presented with an executive summary, uh, the, the public can easily identify components of this. And how it aligns to our priorities. And, you know, the public should be able to locate it easily, but in a variety of modes, whether it's our website. I talk with Marissa Pomplin every once in a while about how should we have this prepared in hard copy when people just want to come to the board office to, to take a look? We're not quite sure how to navigate a DPI website or a own website with it. And they just want to take a look at, you know, they want to take a look at the text, kind of the opposite of what we just talked about in OE four nine. Also publishing in print media in our board docs. So just a variety would be able to help. Also, you expect me, uh, to ensure that we follow UFR, the Wisconsin Uniform Financial Accounting requirements and to abide by the requirements and deadlines of the federal government and especially Wisconsin's DPI. And our budget plans, you know, make sure that, you know, and you expect me to assure that our plan, that, that we plan for and include specific changes in employee compensation and benefit costs for all employees. And then be prepared for other factors and variables like inflation, our local tax, uh, projections, our revenue projections, enrollment. There are many variables, um, with revenue and expenses that we're preparing for right now, but also at the, the federal and state level. And, you know, our process, and we'll illustrate that, and Abby has quite a bit of history in the district with it, input from district employees on the budgeting process itself. So then the glossary, the, the definition of some terms right there, some, some that we use, not just in the interpretation, but, um, also in the proposed indicators. So with that, I'd like to open that up for, um, feedback, alteration of some indicators, um, and other ideas. And I know that Abby would be able to answer questions when it comes to UFR and DPI and it's, it's not the English teacher, right? It's the, it's the financial person.
Thank you. Comments and questions for Superintendent Johnson? Commissioner Linds?
I think it looks good. There is kind of a reoccurring thing throughout this document about multi-year and about planning and about what, where are we going? Where have we been? And I, I, I think what it's asking for is really, it's, it's really spot on. Budget, and it's in the first paragraph, it's a plan for expenditures as well as a forecast for revenue. And how we get those artifacts in, in, and provide it for the board and, and just summarize in what do our revenues look like? What are the, um, assumptions in those revenues? Where's taxes and enrollments and, and just assumptions? And how does that align to how we're anticipating those expenses like the healthcare, salary increases, the capital, the maintenance in the three to five year kind of projection? So that when the board is kind of considering, uh, capital plans or, um, I know we'll have the insurance, uh, presentation here. And I'm guessing that probably will be an increase, just a, a wild shot in the dark. You know, I, I, how do, how do those align with where our, our revenues sit? Are they keeping pace? So I think it looks good. The artifacts to me are really going to be the, the kind of the key and, and what is, you know, summarized for the board that keeps us out of the weeds, but gives us firm understanding of financials.
I'd like to allow Abby to share a little bit about this, but, you know, one thing we talked about with, with a, a multi-year plan. If we were just to go back two years or two and a half years, as you know, COVID nineteen has really upended, I, I mean, every, I think every, uh, business manager, financial executive director in the state has just, oh my gosh, wow. On a variety of levels. With revenues, with, with expenses, you know, just, O'Clair was, we were having a wonderful, uh, you know, very steady growth in enrollment for quite some time. And then, okay, two years ago, it was four hundred and forty students. And then this past year, fifty students. Well, that, for a district like ours that was gaining, uh, quite a bit, nice, nice, slow, steady growth. That's a tremendous impact on our three to five year. What I can say is that Abby has shown me certain types of projections with certain types of variables for five years, but they can be extremely, you know what, sometimes promising, but on the other time, sometimes pretty scary, so to speak. When, and I, I have yet to meet too many, a financial, um, executive director who's not conservative. But that's, but that's what we have to prepare for. And I think part of that is not to have that doom and gloom, but actually something very realistic. And I've spoken with Abby about the flexibility to have, well, let's look for flat enrollment because we, we want to make sure that that's, that's settled. We also look at, you know, special education funding. You name it, there are probably eight or nine variables that we looked at with, uh, with general expenses, that twenty percent of our budget that's not salary and benefits. Inflation, all of those things Abby does plan for. Abby, I'd like to, for you to go ahead with what we discussed a little bit too with the multi-year.
Thank you. So we did talk about the five-year projections and that is something we've known for quite a few years. Um, we just haven't necessarily shared that publicly because kind of as Superintendent Johnson mentioned, that it's a lot of doom and gloom. And so you really have to understand and be able to talk through, uh, what's, what those reports mean. Because, you know, when, when, I'm sure Ryan, you'll understand, you know, every year that number is based upon the year before. So for example, if we look back two years ago, you know, the board had adopted a one point six million dollar deficit. And so then if you roll that forward to the next year and have an estimate for, um, salary and benefit increases and your other, you know, expenses as well, you know, pretty soon you're looking at a four, five million dollar. And then another year down the road, you're looking at maybe eighty to ten. And so it's kind of scary and it's doom and gloom. And like Superintendent Johnson and I talked, we, we can, um, look at expenses and feel pretty good about them and the, what we expect to happen. Obviously, there's some variables, health insurance, which is a big component of the benefit piece and CPI, um, which is also another piece of the salary part. But the hard part is the revenue because there are so many things beyond our control that we don't even know until four months into the fiscal year we started. That when, um, we're talking about being conservative and flat enrollment, um, it's much easier to do that than to project that we're going up and then all of a sudden after October fifteenth, have to make drastic changes. So in the experience that this year, right, our open enrollment number came in much better than what we were anticipating it to be. And so that also helped us when it came down to that final reconciliation of the budget. So, um, we do try to be conservative, just on the revenue side to help us, um, try to accurately predict what's going to happen. But with that three-year rolling average, and I always happen to wait till that September Um, try to accurately predict what's gonna happen, but with that three-year rolling average and always having to wait till that September third Friday count. It does create challenges, and so, you know, we've been using the five-year, um, projection for quite a few years. And it's certainly something we can share, I think we just wanna be very, um, aware. Of what, um, assumptions are built into that, and we also don't want to send our board or our community into, um, panic mode. Because we know that, that those things will change, especially when we have a biennial budget that's only gives us revenue numbers for the next two years. And I know that's why, um, we haven't publicly shared those five-year projections. Because of the fact that after year two, they're so inaccurate and so doom and gloom that, um, you know. Then people are talking about, well, how do you stay in business? And, you know, when do you go to referendum, and so that creates additional, um, concerns or questions. And so, um, Superintendent Johnson and I talked about how can we, um, meet those goals within this operating, um, expectation? And so we have a few ideas, and so we'll be sharing them soon.
So, I just wanna talk about expenditures for a minute, so one of the things, I think the wisest things that Commissioner Clements has ever said. Was, you know, we, we speak our values with our money. And, um, I'm wondering if there is a way or an easy way, and maybe it falls just under ten point one there. Um, but I'm wondering if, if there is an easy way for us to have. Um, a, a, a yearly kind of update about any shifts in our. Um, expenditures that would be in alignment with perhaps some. You know, if, like, if we're working really hard on one, you know, initiative in the district and, and to, you know, to meet some different results. Um, po- you know, results, points for our students. Um, maybe just to see where those, you know, if, if there are shifts or, you know, this year we spent this much on these. You know, kind of initiatives and this much on these kind of initiatives. And obviously, in the last two years, we've spent a lot of money on, you know, supporting our kids at home. Um, you know, so just kind of, you know, where. Um, I think that something like that of, you know, if it's a graph or a pie chart or something like that. So that we can see year-over-year shifts and where we're putting our money, you know, if we make a big climate investment or an environmental investment. Um, you know, anything like that, uh, I think it helps us as board members s- speak. Um. Positively and confidently, you know, about how, how we are prioritizing, um, funding. When we're out speaking to our, you know, out to community members. Um, I think one of the smartest things the district ever did during a referendum is that we had that. The member of the postcard that went out, there was like a dollar bill and it broke it up on the back about how we spend our money, something like that. But, you know, with perhaps the, that could show the change, um, and specific. Results that we're targeting with, with that money perhaps, uh, on a yearly basis.
I'd like, if Abby could share her thoughts on that first, Commissioner Zer, and I could follow up with some Esther three. Activities that we've done related to, let's say, learning loss and behavioral concerns or mental health supports. Go ahead, Abby.
Thank you. I understand what you're asking, I think I would have to kind of look at some data and figure out how would we do that? Because with our budget being broken down into categories, I'm not sure that I could get to that level of detail real easily. I mean, I think that we see changes within, um, maybe some of the categories. For example, with our, um, one-to-one device initiative. So we saw a big increase last year in our equipment budget. Because we had the purchase of all of the, um, waste items and, you know, that, that swung the capital items of the budget. Or the supply items of the budget, um, much larger than it had been, and then it came back down this year when we adopted the budget. So I think I would need to maybe look a little, dig a little bit deeper to be able to figure out how could we articulate that. Um, I try to do that when the budget is adapted or even before, you know, when we talk about what happened last year compared to what the requests are this year. But maybe there's something else that we can do to make that goal. And then as far as the dollar goes, um, that was an item that we came up with when we did the twenty sixteen referendum, and it's been a useful tool. And we do use it, um, pretty much every year that we adopt the budget again, just to kind of help that visual. So if you think that there's some more granularity we should provide with that, we could certainly, um, look at that. We tried to keep that high level to keep it simple.
Yeah, I think what I, I think what I, wh- what would be helpful is just how we align the money that we spend. On the, on the goals of the board, right? When we're, when we're setting, when we go out and, and have results conversations with our district, which I hope that we will, we will do with the community, you know, relate. You know, whether, whether that's through an annual meeting or other, other types of activities. Um, certainly during referendum time of, you know, here are the things that we hear the community saying are really important. Here's where they are expressed in our board policies, here's how we are monitoring those, you know, those results. For our community, and here's how we are investing in those results. And I think that that is something that we can't specifically articulate. And I, I, I hear your point that it's challenging, so I, I don't wanna just say, oh, well, do it anyway. But I'm, you know, I think that, I think it's just an interesting idea of how could we articulate? That component of, you know, putting resources behind our results. Maybe we can't, but I was asking.
What I, what I'd add, Commissioner Zer and the rest of the board would be. Esther three, what's appropriated, what the Oaklary School District is eligible for over the next two and a half years is twelve point eight million dollars. That's a significant amount of one-time money for this district over the next two and a half years. So what the federal government has stated is that at least twenty percent of that needs to be attributed. And distributed toward learning loss, that's at least twenty percent. So we've already got surveyed, gotten survey data from our system leaders in the district, as well as a couple other parent groups. But again, there needs to be a high degree of transparency with those funds. Once we get all the input from our stakeholders, we get that, and hopefully by the end of January. We will have our plans determined, and then those will be posted transparent, once we put them in Wise Grant. Um, and Abby oversees that as well, and we place that in there, and that is for, uh, everyone to see, our stakeholders to see. This is how this money will be appropriated, because we will not be getting any extra funding from the state of Wisconsin per pupil. This next school year. And we're, we're gonna be unsure, and we're gonna have to make some, um, and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to prognosticate about. You know, is it maybe one hundred dollars in the first year of the biennial? Uh, in the summer of twenty twenty-three, we're not sure yet. Uh, but we have to plan for that, and we have to, you know, we have to forecast that. Um, but that's why the Spencer funding, um, that we're eligible for is, is so critical for our students. Because they need it now, they need tho- those supports now, our staff need those now, as well as our families. That twelve point eight million dollars, there is that high degree of transparency. So that's what we're meeting, uh, over the next month, we're getting that information. It's a Qualtrix survey, so we'll be able to disaggregate it by community members, by staff members, by parents. Uh, and actually by students too, so really excited, um, to do that, we've had some groups to work with it. But, once again, that's a small part of what our overall budget is, but we have to be highly transparent about that.
So, I just wanna bring up, um, that definition of future years, which is just below. We are there, and as Commissioner Lyons said, you know, it looks good. But you've said it several times, as we've had conversations, you know, about that three to five year plan, and Abby, I'm glad that we have this five year. Vision, I do find myself, uh, dissatisfied with the definition of future years being current year and one in the future. And I think what you've said though is that we, we have sort of this three to five year vision. One thing I want, you know, you always say we don't wanna, we don't wanna send the board into a panic mode. I wanna say that I think you've done an excellent job over at least my tenure on the board of educating board members to realize. How, uh. Loose is not the right word, but how uncertain the budget becomes when we go beyond the biennial or we go beyond the current definition there. And I think, um. Well, there probably will be, you know, an instance where a particular board member you have to communicate with and re-educate as we go through. I'm not very concerned about the board. Going into panic mode if we see a five-year projection that has significant deficits on it. Uh, I, I do think we do need to have, the board needs to have available to it. And there's of course ways that the board can receive material and understand what's going on, where it's not just a full release to the public. And because certainly the public would, is much harder to educate, because there are a hundred thousand of them that we're gonna have to talk to. As opposed to seven with rotation as people come and go. So I would like to see, and I, I don't think that the, you know, it. No one would expect the line-by-line budget that you're developing for the year, and the, but we need to have that vision. As I was talking to Superintendent Johnson before the meeting, is, you know, we have now commitments in this district that are spanning thirty years. When we look at twenty fifty for our climate commitment, we have commitments in this district that are spanning a minimum of twenty years when we look at our equity commitment. And the board needs to have that idea, even if it's, uh, essentially a vision. So I don't know exactly what it looks like, but I do find myself dissatisfied with that definition of future years on this. And I, and I understand that this is new work for the department, Superintendent Johnson, and, uh, so, you know, I wouldn't, uh, you know, vote down. This particular monitoring report this year, I do wanna see it then extended out, so we start to get that information. Because I think that'll help us, one, understand what's the direction that the, you know, are we fulfilling some of our other commitments? And two, it will help the board as advocates for the district, both in a community sense, so we can say, you know. Yes, if we don't continue to support our, our schools, we're going.